There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio and Fairfield County. And like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids &amp; Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at (740) 654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. Due to the recent success of the new car market, there is a large inventory of used cars available for resale. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for. With over 15 years at this location and 27 years' experience in the business, we are the best place to go to find your next car, truck, van, or SUV. As a member of the Better Business Bureau, we are a Carfax Advantage dealer and offer great financing rates through a local area bank with warranties available on most vehicles. We know your time is valuable, so we take special pride in making sure that you get what you came for at a price that you can afford.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frank E. Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at (740) 653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster or 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Welcome to this meeting of Lancaster City Council. Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for this day and your many blessings. Thank you for your presence in our life and how we continue to see you at work. We ask tonight that you would continue to be with us as we go about the work of the city of Lancaster. May we set personal agendas aside and do what is best from our own value system for those who are a part of this body and a part of this city. We ask for your leadership guidance and direction in our life, in Jesus's name, amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you all make sure your microphones are on, please, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt? Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Groff?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Stoughton?
Here.
Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Let the record reflect that eight of nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance tonight. Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mrs. Bobbitt from tonight's meeting, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Mrs. Bobbitt from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Mrs. Bobbitt is excused. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated June 24, 2019.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated July 10, 2019 regarding 1369 Frederick Street submitted by Code Enforcement Director Sean Fowler. Email dated July 10, 2019 regarding 1369 Frederick Street submitted by Mrs. Teener. Series of emails regarding basic information on PFAS submitted by Superintendent Mike Nixon. Email dated draft meeting minutes submitted by President Oul. Email dated July 11, 2019 regarding Service Committee Agenda submitted by Mrs. Bobbitt. And finally, an email dated July 15, 2019 regarding forthcoming right-of-way ordinance introduction submitted by City Engineer Mitch Nolan.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There is one. Notice to the Legislative Authority of a Transfer of a Liquor License from Ted's Marathon, Inc., doing business as Ted's Marathon located at 182 East 6th Avenue, Lancaster, Ohio, to CSP Investment Lancaster One LLC, doing business as Ted's Marathon One located at 182 East 6th Avenue, Lancaster, submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no special presentations or awards tonight. Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
City Council sets time aside at each one of its meetings to allow the voters and taxpayers of Lancaster to address City Council on any item or issue they would like. If you're interested in addressing Lancaster City Council tonight, we invite you to come forward, sign in with your name and address at the podium, and then state the same for the record tonight. Please note that while at a later time in the meeting, City Council members may choose to respond to you, they will not do so during this portion of the meeting. In accordance with the rules of City Council, we ask that you would keep your comments to five minutes or less. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Yes, sir. Sir, for the sake of time, you can sign in afterward if you would just state your name and address, and you can begin.
David McKinstry, 604 North High. I was here several months ago, I believe probably in May, inquiring about sidewalk repair. And having not heard or seen anything happening in the city in that area of city improvement, I'm back to ask, or at the time I understood and was told, the reasons we could not do it, basically the lack of funding. But I was told that we had a grant writer and we would be exploring that option. So I guess I am back asking specifically, having not seen anything, as to where, what grants possibly had been applied for during the previous months, if those grants have been declined, or are they still in process? And are there any attempts to get any other grants? Now, I realize Mayor Scheffler did talk about a city sidewalk improvement program for the budget, but you know, I'm back actually asking about the grants which I was told we would probably be looking for.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Mrs. Burnside.
Good evening. I come before council this evening to discuss the upcoming tax levies that may be discussed this evening. Since the documentation was not available until the time of the last council meeting, this is the first opportunity to address it. I have a few questions that may be answered later in the meeting. With regards to Temporary Resolution 88-19, the Lancaster Park Tax Levy, I have attended park board meetings where this tax levy has been discussed. I was present when it was made clear that the board did not want the park levy combined in any fashion with the Lancaster City Income Tax Levy. There was discussion as to how the legislation was to be presented within the city council. There was discussion how city income tax was being discussed at city level. There was discussion how Parks Department would present the levy, since there was a current levy, would not expire until December of 2020. And I was present at the special meeting of the park board, June 21, 2019, at the park office, which the agenda was levy discussion. In attendance was the park board members, Mike Tharp, Randy Ullam, Paul Martin, Corey Schrunover, David Oul, and George Burnside. Discussion was how to present the legislation with the fact the current levy was running through December 2020, that a higher percentage is needed, how to address this, add a small amount now, repeal the existing levy, add a full amount now, wait and add a full amount to be effective January 2021. Randall Ullam was asked to be present to help with the legal aspect of these questions. He stated you cannot repeal any existing levies as they have to run their course. It was then that the city income tax started being discussed, that different scenarios were being discussed with it. Last city council meeting, Councilwoman Becky Teener asked if there was a violation in this meeting, and she was told no. Per my copy of the Ohio Sunshine Laws 2018 that I received from Mike DeWine's office, and just to be sure, there have been no changes to this particular piece since its release. Open Meetings Act, Chapter 2, Duties of Public Body, 1, Types of Meetings and Notice Requirements, Special Meetings. When a public body holds a special meeting to discuss particular issues, the statement of the meeting's purpose must specifically indicate those issues. And the public body may only discuss those specific issues at that meeting. Discussing matters at a special meeting that were not disclosed in the notice of the purpose, either an open session or executive session, is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. According to the agenda I have for the special meetings of the park board, the subject was for their levy discussion. Or do I misunderstand this resource? With regards to Temporary Resolution 87-19, is this legislation implying by the verbiage that the Appointed Financial Advisory Ad Hoc Committee has recommended this tax levy? Whereas the summary that is presented by this executive panel did indeed advise city council and those that this information would interact with, that they did not feel it was within their assignment to make specific recommendations, but rather provide carefully researched information and options so that elected officials can make informed decisions, decisions about funding and priorities made by those closer to operations of the city rather than an outside ad hoc group. They do recommend sharing this information to develop a 10-year strategic plan. The inclusion of all their preparations of setting information is not in a recommendation. I do not see an expiration date on the income tax levy or the park levy. Are these both continuous levies? Are they never-ending levies that can never be repealed, only added to? If so, will that clearly be added on the ballot? Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Well, seeing none, we thank each of you for being here tonight. Are there reports of standing committees?
Yes. Finance Committee Meeting Minutes for June 24, 2019 submitted by Mrs. Downhour. Finance Committee Meeting Minutes for July 15, 2019 submitted by Mr. Stoughton. Public Works Committee Meeting Minutes for June 14, 2019 submitted by Mr. Schunover. Safety Committee Meeting Minutes for June 26, 2019 submitted by Mr. Hall. Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee Meeting Minutes for April 1, 2019, and June 3, 2019. And finally, the IT Telecom Committee Meeting Minutes for July 11, 2019 submitted by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 76-19.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids for the Memorial Drive Culvert Repair Project offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend the third, I'm sorry, we've already had. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record the Resolution Temporary Number 7619.
Mr. Hall.
My second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 76-19. Discussion, Mr. Woodard.
And as this was brought out earlier, this is basically, we've been looking at the Memorial Drive Culvert and trying to find ways to do it with the least restriction of driving services in the area, and I think we've got pretty much that taken care of. This is just to finish that particular program here for the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to pass carries eight to zero. We now have second reading on Temporary Resolution 82-19.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids for the Fifth Sixth Forest Row Sewer Separation Project offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Woodard.
Second reading.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution 82-19. Temporary Resolution 83-19.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an engineering agreement for the Lawrence Street Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrade Project Design offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 83-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 83-19. Discussion on the motion to suspend, Mr. Woodard.
And again, this one, we've talked about the work that we're going to have to do at the Lawrence Street Water Plant, and this is in order to authorize the design phase of this particular project.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 83-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 83-19. Further discussion, Mr. Woodard?
No further discussion.
Other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 83-19 passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution 86-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the General Fund 101 and amend the certificate with county auditor, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution Temporarily Numbered 86-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 86-19. Discussion, Ms. Down.
Just that this is an expense for legal advertising, and we really do need to get it taken care of.
Very good, thank you. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Ms. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporarily Numbered 86-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 86-19. Ms. Downhour?
No further discussion.
Other discussion around the table? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 86-19 passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution 87-19.
A resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend Section 183.012, 183.013, and 183.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Lancaster in order to increase the income tax rate by forty-five hundredths of one percent, .45 percent, from the current rate of one and seventy-five hundredths percent, 1.75 percent, to a rate of two and twenty hundredth percent, 2.20 percent, beginning January 1, 2020, to specify the allocation of funds from such tax and declaring an emergency, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mrs. Downhour.
Second reading, please.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution 87-19. Temporary Resolution 88-19.
A resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend Section 183.012, 183.013, and 183.002 of the codified ordinances of the city of Lancaster, Ohio, in order to increase and replace the city income tax rate for parks and recreation from the current rate of one and one-half tenth of one percent, fifteen percent tax, for the period January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2022, on earnings and income to a rate of twenty hundredths percent, .20 percent, continuing beginning January 1, 2020, and declaring an emergency, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Ms. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend Temporary Resolution 88-19 by replacing it with Temporary Resolution 88-19* as given to the clerk prior to the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend Temporary Resolution 88-19 and replace it with Temporary Resolution 88-19* as given to the clerk in writing prior to tonight's meeting. Ms. Downhour.
Mr. Ullam, would you like to provide some context around this amendment, please?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Downhour. This is, so when we introduced this at last meeting, I think I'd stated to you that we were still doing some legal research on the issue. The piece before was taking the Parks Levy from a .15 to a .20. That would be effective January 1 of 2020. And I submit it that way, that's the way the park board ultimately would like it if it could be, but our research was confirmed that we weren't able to do that. So what this does is basically change that so that this would be a .20 continuing levy for the parks that would in essence take effect on January 1 of 2023, which would be the expiration of the current .15 Parks Levy, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ullam. Would you like to add anything, Ms. Downhour, before we open? Okay, further discussion then on the motion to amend? Yes, Mr. Woodard.
I have a concern as we look ahead on this. I know we're not passing it tonight, but my concern is that we're looking at something that won't take effect till 2023. We've got a possible city tax rate that we're looking at, and it seems to me like a little premature to put this on the ballot and have it possibly run against the city issue when the funds that would come from it will not be available until 2023. I think there's plenty of time to get this on the ballot in the next year or two.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I completely agree with Mr. Woodard. Second to that, this Parks renewal has never passed by anything less than 60% for and 40% against. I think that even making it a permanent tax rate and increasing it, it will have no problem based on what our parks do. So I agree. I don't think there's a rush to judgment to get something on the ballot in 2019 that doesn't take effect until 2023.
Okay, further discussion?
The only thing I'll add, and I don't disagree with either of you and your point, from a strategy standpoint, next year is a presidential election, so there's concern there. And then, why are you giving me that look? We're just having the discussion, isn't that right? And then, you know, so then that does reduce the amount if you don't want to go in a presidential year when things can become a little more difficult and challenging. And so that's the only alternative view that the Parks had brought up when we were having the discussion in the meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I'll just add that in, ask if there's further discussion on the motion to amend?
Mr. President, I would just say that my experience has been in terms of running tax initiatives, that high turnout elections in many instances are more favorable than lower turnout situations, so I don't know that that necessarily would be a negative consideration.
And I don't either, it was just part of the strategy discussion. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else, before we go back to Mr. Woodard?
And in addition to that, 2020 might not be the best year to run, but it got till 2023 so they could easily run it in 2021. You've got two elections there, and if they did have a problem, which I would seriously doubt, they've still got 2022. So I think, I can say, I feel we're very premature to go right now.
It is indeed.
And they may have greater needs waiting that many years down the road.
It is indeed early, and I'll say this, in that meeting there was discussion about having the Parks representatives with us, and so perhaps if we decide to have that special finance meeting, we can get someone from the Parks Board there to talk a little bit more about strategy and why they're requesting this at this particular time. Okay, further discussion on the motion to amend? Yes, Mr. McDaniel?
I would just say, yeah, I would love to hear from the Park Board, but I know they've given it significant thought and plannings going into it. There's a lot of reasons why, and I'd like for them to tell us that.
Very good. So whether that be at that special finance committee meeting, or whether it be at our meeting, special meeting on the 29th when we're considering this, either one of those is possible, and we can decide how we want to approach that as we move forward. Very good. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to amend carries eight to zero. Ms. Downhour.
Second reading.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution 88-19*. We now have first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 89-19.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a change order for the Pioneer Alley Storm Sewer Replacement Project and to authorize the issuance of one then and now certificate, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 89-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 89-19. Mr. Woodard.
Again, this is one where we are just asking for a change order to set up the Pioneer Alley Sewer Replacement Project, and it's something that we really can't wait three weeks in order to get a vote on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution eighty-nine nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution eighty-nine dash nineteen. Further discussion, Mr. Woodard?
No further discussion, sir.
Other discussion before we vote on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary resolution eighty-nine dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution ninety dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing amendment to the Neo-Ride Regional Council of Governments offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover?
First reading, please.
First reading on temporary resolution ninety dash nineteen. Temporary resolution ninety-one dash nineteen.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the general fund one-oh-one, increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the point four-five Police and Fire Levy Fund two-four-seven, amend the certificate with county auditor, and to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the point one-five Fire Levy Fund two-four-six, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of resolution temporary ninety-one nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution ninety-one dash nineteen. Mr. Stoughton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking for suspension this evening because of some stress on the overtime budget, because of unexpected retirements, planned retirement, and some FM LA staffing issues. We are starting to run low in the overtime fund, and we will not be whole at the next payroll. So I'm asking for suspension tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporary ninety-one nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution ninety-one dash nineteen. Further discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Thanks.
Other discussion around the table? Mr. Woodard?
Mr. Stoughton, I would, I would probably imagine that this may, issue may have to come up again because it's just halfway through the year. Most likely, we will not be the last time we have to add to this fund.
No, I agree. And I give the chief credit. I mean, he tried to, he tried to make his best guess to cut it thin, but as I told him when he requested it, if you need more, you need more.
Yes.
So, but they, you know, and let me give both our chiefs credit. They do a wonderful job managing their budgets and their overtime. So.
Yes, they do. Thank you very much. Mr. Woodard, Mr. Stoughton, further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary resolution ninety-one dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution ninety-two dash nineteen.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the gas fund six-oh-two and amend the certificate with the county auditor and to authorize any then and now certificates that may come from this project, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Woodard?
Starting to feel like a broken record here. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution ninety-two nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution ninety-two dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Woodard?
Again, this is one where we just need to put funds in, in order to buy materials and everything to complete projects, and the funds are there. This is an enterprise fund, so it's nothing coming out of the general fund, and this is something that has been anticipated and we need to do, and so we're asking for this suspension. We'd also like to point out at this time that those people, I think pretty well know this by now, but again, relying on the fact that the gas department has been able to lower the gas rates for the coming year, which they anticipate would save the ad, the average family about fifty-two dollars a year.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Woodard?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution twenty, ninety-two nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution ninety-two dash nineteen. Mr. Woodard?
No further comments.
Other discussion around the table? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary resolution ninety-two dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Are there any further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with third reading of temporary ordinance ten dash nineteen.
An ordinance to authorize the service safety director to accept approximately twenty-one acres, more or less, of property situated in section thirty-three, township fifteen, range nineteen, township of Greenfield, Fairfoot County, Ohio, from the estate of Merrill Bowers, offered by Mrs. Teener, second by Mr. Woodard.
Ms. Teener?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance ten nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance ten dash nineteen. Ms. Teener?
Yes, this is some, this lane we're getting from, an estate. I think Mike's here, but I believe it's, they're going to, it's going to the parks, correct? And I believe they're gonna put baseball fields there, right? Eventually? Uh-oh, that was wrong.
Here comes Mr. Tharp.
Yes, this property's been in the works for about eight years. Merrill passed away in the end of two thousand and seventeen, when we were trying to get that property turned over to the parks system. Now it's been wrapped up in an estate for the last year and a half. Finally, that's done, and this would be the eventual replacement of Miller Park Baseball Diamonds is our plan.
Thank you, Mr. Tharp.
Is there gonna be anything else besides like baseball fields? Is it big enough for anything else besides that, or?
With the fences and the parking lot, probably all that we would ever be able to do besides baseball diamonds, maybe football would be the only other possibility. Don't know that that's for sure, but definitely for baseball slash softball diamonds geared towards adults and some youth sports, so.
And how about, what will happen with Miller Park?
At this point, Miller Park, with the cooperation and the money from Stormwater, I do believe, would be turned into what we would call a green space. It would be walking area, walking paths. We would not put boat ramps into it at this point in time, but, you know, it floods, it, it's a flood area, it's a flood zone. So
Oh, is it?
We would just turn it into a green space and leave Miller Pool in place at this point in time.
And would they, is, that maybe possibly, if they would put a splash park, would they ever consider doing something like that there?
I don't think so. We're sitting around on top of the aquifer right there, and I don't want to cause any more problems in that area, unlike some other projects have.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tharp, for that discussion. Yes, Mr. Woodard?
And again, further on that, the EPA has been after us for a number of years to look at ways to get the baseball diamonds and everything off of that area because of the aquifer that's underneath it. So doubtful we'd be able to use it for anything else because EPA would have to certify that, and once we remove those diamonds, I'm sure they will not.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Very good. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance ten dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Second reading on temporary ordinance eleven dash nineteen.
An ordinance to amend section one eighty-three point zero-one-two, one eighty-three point zero-one-three, and one eighty-three point zero-oh-two of the codified ordinances of the city of Lancaster, Ohio, in order to increase the city income tax rate by forty-five hundredths of one percent, point four-five percent, from the current rate of one and seventy-five hundredths percent, one point seven-five percent, to a rate of twen, two and twenty hundredths percent, two point two-zero percent, beginning January first, two thousand and twenty, and to specify the allocation of funds from such tax, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mrs. Downhour?
Second reading, please.
Second reading on temporary ordinance eleven dash nineteen. Temporary ordinance twelve dash nineteen.
An ordinance, ordinance to amend section one eighty-three point zero-one-two, one eighty-three point zero-one-three, and one eighty-three point zero-oh-two of the codified ordinances of the city of Lancaster, Ohio, in order to repeal the current rate of one and one-half-tenth of one percent, fifteen percent tax, for the period January first, two thousand and eighteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, on earnings and income, and replace with a rate of twenty hundredths percent, which is twenty percent, continuing beginning, beginning January first, two thousand and twenty, on earnings and income for parks and recreation as more fully set forth herein and declaring an emergency offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mrs. Downhour?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend temporary ordinance twelve dash nineteen by replacing it with temporary ordinance twelve dash nineteen star as given to the clerk prior to the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend temporary ordinance twelve dash nineteen with temporary ordinance twelve dash nineteen star as given to the clerk in writing prior to tonight's meeting. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Just that this ordinance corresponds to the temporary resolution that was previously amended.
That's right. This is the companion piece to that. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to amend carries eight to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Second reading, please.
Second reading on temporary ordinance twelve dash nineteen. Are there fir- are there further ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we have no tabled legislation, and we will move to unfinished business. Does anyone have unfinished business they'd like to discuss tonight? Ms. Teener?
I do. Mayor Sheffler, have you spoken with Linda or anything about the, because in code enforcement, we did talk about the sidewalks. Has she found any grants? I understand what you said about, you know, with the other. Has there been anything we've been able to find other than the one?
Well, first of all, you can only apply, you can only apply for grants that are out there and available, and to date, we have not found any that specifically address sidewalks. She has applied for a number of other grants covering a number of different topics, but nothing for sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sheffler. Thank you, Ms. Teener. Yes, Mr. Hall?
Mr. President, I'm not sure if this falls into this section, but I would just like to note that we did have a citizen in public comment, voiced concern about the possible, about a possible sunshine violation, and if it's appropriate, I'd like to hear from safety or law director all about whether or not there was a breach of the Sunshine Act, and if there was, if there's a remedy that we might consider undertaking.
Mr. Olem, you in a position to address this this evening?
Yes, thank you, President. Cool. Yeah, I guess, short answer is no, there wasn't any issue. The park board basically has no jurisdiction over the levy that you are looking at for general operating expenses. So, you know, in public records parlance, the issue becomes, are you taking action on something that you haven't given the public notice of? So park board clearly had no jurisdiction over the general, general fund levy that you all were discussing extensively here tonight. The other issue is that it came up, I mean, it was at that meeting. It came up because they are intertwined, as you've seen through the legislation. Because a levy changes our tax code, and the tax code is specific in references, as we track this and as you see the changes go through these two levies or whatever, it's like, you know, the language has to change or whatever to accommodate both of them, should both of them pass this group and then basically make it to the ballot and pass. And so they're intertwined, but there is no sunshine violation because, again, as I said, the parks board has no jurisdiction over the city levy whatsoever. So there's no, nothing wrong there.
Thank you, Mr. Olem. Mr. Hall, has that satisfied you?
It did, thank you.
I appreciate you bringing that up. I was concerned about the allegation or suggestion as well. I was the one who answered no last time. It was on advice of the, our legal counsel that the reason why was because there was no jurisdiction, and so I appreciate you clarifying that tonight and confirming that, Mr. Olem. Further unfinished business tonight that anyone would like to discuss? We'll then move on to new business. Does anyone have new business they'd like to discuss this evening? Ms. Teener?
Yes, I, there was an incident back last week in a park where I live. There were people shooting off fireworks on July fourth. I know it's a fun time and that, but we need to really kind of figure out, I understand, of course, I guess the parks, they don't have any authority over people in the parks, but with the police department and that, I think we need to do something with our parks because that they're, that night, I know it was a busy night. Officer did come, I know, I've got the reports, an hour before and an hour after, but they were shooting off full-blown fireworks. It wasn't just your little, you know, rockets and this and that. And so, officer did come, and he turned on his lights to let him know he was there, and he went ahead and left, but they stayed. And surprisingly enough, and I've got pictures, they actually put everything in the trash can, pretty much. However, we need to do something about who's policing and who's got the authority, and if the parks, they don't have the authority at night or whatever, you know, we just need to enforce more in our parks if something's going on. Chief McDaniel, I spoke to you about it. You saw the pictures of the fireworks and that. I mean, do you have anything to?
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, I did speak with Mrs. Teener about it, and I actually spoke with Chief Pilar about this issue, and, you know, having been with the police department thirty-plus years, it's the busiest, well, it's not the busiest night of the year, but it's certainly one of the busiest nights of the year, and I believe he said they had forty-two fireworks calls that night.
Yes.
They had eight officers on duty plus supervision. Parks Department also had an extremely busy night in that they were managing Rising Park and everything that goes with that, the superintendent's house directly in the fall zone for fireworks coming off of Mount Pleasant. So parks would have very difficult time responding, and it does fall back to the police department. And Chief Pilar, you know, you prioritize things, and fireworks is not a high priority call. It is important. It is a, disturbs people, and obviously, these were illegal fireworks, so there's that concern. The officer in question did come to the area, and he did leave with no enforcement action. Perhaps it'd be the officer that resigned and moved to Florida. Well, I'll just mention a couple of things very, very quickly, and Ms. Woody had mentioned these earlier in finance, but the ex-church has been doing some work and is paying the fares for, for the loops, I think, throughout this week, and so we appreciate them and their, their ministry. I'll also just mention that they were a huge help at the Fourth of July fireworks and parking vehicles, and so we appreciate what that church is doing in the community. Thanks to the Fourth of July Committee, it was a fantastic fireworks show and a great event all day long, and just a quick note, that's a completely privately funded event. In other words, no city dollars go for that. The law enforcement officers are all paid special duty. Everything that happens is, is paid via private dollars from parking and sponsorships, and so there are some under the impression that that's a, a city thing, but it is not. And so I just wanted to throw that out there. I'll also just make mention that it's Lancaster festival time, and I think that because we're all from around here and been here for so long, we can sort of take advantage of the fact that we have really an unbelievable thing that happens here for ten days in our community. So I would encourage you around the table, as well as anyone out in the audience and those watching tonight, to please get out and support the festival. Seventy-some events, many of which are free to the public, and so we hope you go out and, and support the festival in the next couple of weeks. Other new business before we move forward?
Why don't you talk about what you're doing on the twenty-eighth?
What am I doing on the twenty-eighth?
On the twenty-first. Twenty-eighth. Twenty-eight. Why don't you have the campground?
We're not going to talk about that. Oh, yeah. Mr. Stoughton's going to join me at the campground.
I will be there.
On the twenty-eighth. I'm preaching at the historic campground, and so I appreciate you bringing that up. Anyone's welcome to come out and, and see me do that. It'll be a ton of fun. You're coming, Ms. Teener?
No, I hear you preaching every Monday. I want to go watch on a Sunday.
It's only every other, and I think you could use a little bit to center life, Ms. Teener.
Hey, I'll light you up.
Come on. Okay, anything else? Thanks, Mr. Stone, for that. Further new business? All right, then, please announce our scheduled meetings.
Upcoming scheduled meetings. Regular scheduled meeting, August twelfth at six-thirty PM here in council chambers, following August twenty-sixth at six-thirty PM. We do have a special meeting, council, the whole special meeting on July twenty-ninth at six-thirty here in council chambers. At that time, we'll be talking about temporary resolution eighty-seven nineteen and eighty-eight dash nineteen star, and temporary ordinance eleven nineteen and twelve nineteen star. Upcoming committee meetings. Economic development, July twenty-fifth at seven-thirty AM in the second floor conference room at City Hall. Code enforcement, August fifth, fifth at seven-thirty, second floor conference room in City Hall. Public works, August ninth at seven-thirty AM in Lancaster Public Transit Conference Room. Finance, August twelfth here at six PM in council chambers. Safety, August fourteenth at seven-thirty AM in City Hall in the second floor conference room. And finally, law committee, August fourteenth at nine AM at the Fairfield County Municipal Court, Community Room, all of which are also listed on the city webpage if I went too fast.
Thank you very much. Are there any bills this evening?
I have one bill, PNC, for a bill to MNCO for publication of legislation in the amount of sixty-eight dollars and five cents.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a need for an executive session? Hearing none, Ms. Teener is ready for the service to end. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Hallelujah.
Mr. President, I'd like to. We have a motion and a second for the meeting to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Make sure to sign your legislation. Have a great evening.
That was an entertaining meeting.